Welcome to our Council and Committee of the Whole meeting for the 6th May 2025. Bonjour et bienvenue à notre réunion de conseil pour le 6 mai. I'd just like to say I'm really happy to be back. I missed you all a little bit being on the road and I hope I remember how to do the job. Just a quick thank you to Councilor Restoolard, Deputy Mayor, for stepping in to chair the meetings while I was away for the last two. It's very nice to be back. For the, I'm looking at the agenda in French. Okay, for the land acknowledgement, I will pass the floor to Councilor Gagné.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Je souhaite prends un moment pour souligner l'importance du territoire sur lequel nous sommes rassemblés. La municipalité de Nippesingouais se reconnaît avec respect que nous sommes réunis sur les terres ancestrales des peuples Anishnabé, sur les territoires traditionnels des premières nations Nippesing, Tamorgomie et Do Khis. Designé par le traité Robinson Huron, nous honorons l'orgueil historique avec le territoire et une belle vision de leur contribution considérable face au renforcement de notre communauté. We do this to reaffirm our commitment and responsibility towards reconciliation and improving our understanding of local indigenous peoples and their culture.
Thank you. Yes, Councilor Gagné, I will, item number two, take any declarations of pecuniary interest on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, my turn.
It is moved by Councilor Restoolard and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be it resolved that the addendum for the Council and Committee of the Whole meeting held on May the 6th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Questions, comments, all in favor? That's carried, thank you.
It is moved by Councilor Restoolard and seconded by Councilor St. Louis. Be it resolved that the agenda for the Council and Committee of the Whole meeting held on May the 6th, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Questions, comments, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. Item number four, delegations and petitions. We do have a delegation this evening. And for that, I would like to welcome to the podium Madame Diane Dernet from the United Club 50. You brought her round.
So I just want to thank you very much for having me this evening. When we had our last meeting with some of the members of the club, they said maybe if we went and presented our club to the council, you know, we'll just let everybody know what we're doing that day. So thank you again for having us. So for those who don't know me, my name is Diane Dernet. I'm the current president of the Cash Pay United 50 Seniors Club. A little bit of history for myself. I was a volunteer with the Cash Pay Steering Committee like a long time ago. I worked closely with the Cash Pay Firefighters Association for over 13 years and I was one of the leads on the new park and splash pad that we have in Cash Pay. So the community is, I really, it's real close to my heart. I will always support the community. So right now, the club, so a little history in the club. In November of 1975, a meeting was held to decide on a name for the new club and the age limits. And the name selected was the United 50 Club. At that time, a constitution was presented and accepted by members and the discussion to purchase the church to hold meetings and events began until a location was purchased in Israel at members' homes. Way back then, we all know that parents had a lot of parties in their homes and stuff like that. So this is where the meetings were held. And sometime in early 1976, the current property at 53 Bain Avenue was purchased by the town of Cash Bay to be used by the United 50 Club for meetings and activities. So they have been there for quite some time at that location. And I mean, the United 50 Club is the last club that's left in Cash Bay. Everything else kind of just dwindled down, but the club is going pretty strong. In November of 1976, they received grants. And maybe somebody will remember, one of the grants was Wintario. They received money from them. And another grant, I forget the name, I sort of didn't draw it down, but it was the grant that's still available now to clubs. I forget the name. Anyway, so many activities took place over the years, like they had bingo, they had quilting, shuffleboard, pool, countless bazaars, potluck suppers. There's pictures at the clubs from all those eras with, you know, smiling faces and all the activities that they did. And in August of 1995, the club was incorporated and the new name was the United 50 Seniors Club. So in November of this year, the club will be celebrating 50 years. And I'm really hoping to have a special day for the club and invite people to have pictures and supper and things like that so people can see what the club is all about, where we're at right now. Look at the old pictures. Like I know a lot of people in the old pictures. It's amazing to go through all the pictures. The club really took it during COVID. And in April of 2002, I received a call from a member asking if I would attend a meeting since the club was in a difficult situation financially and they wanted to attract a younger member to the club. So of course, being the kind-hearted person I was, I suggested bingo and everybody latched onto that and it's going really well. So since September of 2022, we have a monthly bingo. When I talk to people at the bingo, one of the biggest things that they say why they like, they enjoy our bingo is because they know exactly where the money goes. So whatever money we make, we tell them, well, we went to the schools, we went to this, we went to that. So they really enjoy that because now they're going to bingo and they know where the money is going to go. When I left that meeting in April of 2022, it was clear to me that the elder members of the club held a Senate tap in Cash Bay really close to their heart and it was a project that they really wanted somebody to undertake. The Senate tap that was there was built in 1952, so it was way overdue. So we applied to Veterans Canada and through the Case Allianz Fund, we received all the funding for, to redo the Senate tap. And our contractor, Andy Cochane, from Bonded Place, he was the one who redid. He took the old plaques that were there, redid all the plaques and got the new stone and everything. He was very good. What he produced for us, because we didn't want a big extravagant thing, we just wanted something simple. And on that project, we did work with Johnny Balanchine, Catherine Natack, and he helped us make the project a reality. So it's almost 100% complete because of issues in getting some material. Last year, we weren't able to do stamp concrete on the actual pad and we're waiting to see if we can plant trees at the back to create like a backdrop for the new Senate. So of course, as you might know, our biggest fundraiser is the monthly bingo and it's doing really well. The revenues are all donated back into the community and help maintain the expenses for the building located at 53 Bain Avenue. So some of the things we've done with the money, the club paid for the two benches that are at the Senate tap because after we started the project, we were told by Veterans Canada that they do not pay for benches. So the club pays for the benches. We donated $500 to each school in the area twice for the Breakfast Club. Money is really appreciated. Some schools, when I showed up there with the money, they're like, oh my God, thank you. And you know, so it's something that a lot of members were really happy with, donated money to. We helped the No More Tears Initiative. I'm not sure, I think we donated them twice. And you might be aware that when you saw a post on Facebook that some people got their cushions stolen from their patio furniture, stuff like that, the United 50 Club stepped up and we donated $500 to replace them. We sponsored six scholarships for the high schools, $250 for each scholarship for all schools. We did a little bit of work in the hall. We painted the interior of the hall. We bought new window coverings. We installed the new kitchen and changed three windows to high-efficiency windows to help with the cost of maintaining the building and heating. We replaced two toilets with the higher toilets. I think it's a big deal some, but for others it was a big deal. We've had twice now the Christmas party that the farmer used to undertake for the kids in the area where we have entertainment and they get candy and stuff like that to take home. So the club has taken that over from the fire department. We donated money to the Western City Center Fund. And recently, we purchased two laptops and a printer and that will be available at the club for those elders that need help with online banking or if they're interested in getting a course or somebody coming to help with computers, we're going to offer that. And we also sponsored, I forget the name of the group, but it's the group that buys school bags for children when school starts and they fill them up with school supplies. I mean, we want to help the community. That's what we want. So in 2025, it's gearing up to be an exciting year with donations, activists and planning a 50-year anniversary. Sorry, I just got it. So future projects. So the club is in need of a new ceiling to replace the ceiling or do some work because we found out, we wanted to replace the ceiling tiles, but we found out there's no vapor barrier ceiling. So when we lifted one tile, a whole bunch of insulation fell. And I mean, the guys who did it from the club had good intentions, but they haven't got that much insulation. So it's kind of difficult. So that's one of the projects we like to do. So we are hoping to resubmit our application to Trillium, if that's possible, to help us with that renewal. We really want to replace the two doors, the entry doors, to make them accessible doors because we do have members who have walkers, canes, who have difficulty getting in and out of the building and that will be very important. When we had the visit from Mark Sedi, he did say that there are grants available for that. So we're hoping to be tapped into some of those grants. I did look into them, but they're not ready yet for the application. We're looking at purchasing new tables and chairs. We're continuing to support the local schools and other organizations in the area. And right now, our week is pretty full. We have about 110 members, but we do have a lot of activities going on, so our volunteers are very important. We have a coffee club on Mondays and Thursdays from 9 to 11. We host Crip tournaments. We have craft nights on Tuesday. We have potluck suppers that are very, very, they're very well received by the members and it's very great. It's like 40 people come in for a potluck supper, which is great. On Thursdays, we have chair yoga from 11 to 12. We have quilting, our bazaar, and we're going to have other activities for the kids. Like in a snapshot, that's our, that's our club. And I have to say that the policy that came to me today are mostly my volunteers that we have for our videos and that. So we really want to see the community thrive. And we do have other things that we would like to do, but I mean, we need to partnership with the municipality to see if they're feasible or not. One of them that comes to mind is they want to put a deck on the side of the building so that when people come for their coffee, they can sit outside and enjoy the sun. I've already been in contact with Johnny Balanchine. He's going to help me with that. But that's us. Do we have any questions?
Thank you very much for the presentation. No, it's really interesting to hear all the different things you're doing. And I think some of us were aware of some of the ways that you give back to the community because we see this bit and that bit, but it's interesting to hear it all together because there were some I didn't know and I'm sure that that's the same for all members here. I will open the floor for questions or comments to our members. Councilor St. Louis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not so much a question because I know basically everything that's going on, but I just want to thank all of you for everything that you do in our community. I mean, you're right, now with the fire department, that's gone. The 50 Club is all that we've got and you guys do a lot of good work for Cash Bay. Very proud to be from here. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, I will say the work that was done on the Senate tap really is quite incredible. It's such a beautiful monument to the soldiers of Cash Bay. And it was really special that you and your group took that on because I remember going to the first remembrance day after it was installed and it really, you could see the pride in the community. And that's just one of the initiatives that you've taken on. But I do thank you and all your volunteers and all the members for their work within the community. And we look forward to partnering with you and working with you. Did I see a hand? Are you just stretching? I didn't want to exclude anybody. But you know, we look forward to working with you as we move forward because what you do is very important for the village of Cash Bay.
See, I also just want to mention one little thing, if I may.
Yeah, of course.
The meetings that we have with our group, they also said that we know that the community center is something that is very important to the community because of what it serves. And I mean, it's never any time the municipality needs, I don't know, anything to do with the community center help or whatever, we are certainly looking or thinking about helping out if we can in any way with fundraising and stuff like that. So let us know for sure.
Wonderful. We appreciate that. Thank you so much and thank you to everybody for coming today. We will move on with our meeting. I didn't know whether you would like to stay to, you know, watch some of the exciting things we do around here or if... I will, we won't take offense, honestly. Yeah, because I will give you, if you would like to leave, I'll give you a couple of minutes like to, so it's not disruptive. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome. We love having an audience, so.
There you go.
There you go. Thank you again, Yesie Ankhola.
They're the rowdy ones, so they...
I know. I'll keep an eye on them. Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move on to item five on the agenda, Committee of the Whole, 5.1 General Government. We do have a couple of items. The first item on the agenda is the report on strong mayor powers. I guess we're doing it. Okay, so on April 9th, I received a letter, quite surprisingly, from the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing indicating that these strong mayor powers that had been first given to Ottawa and Toronto and then extended to municipalities with population over 50 in October 2023 were being extended to quite a number of additional municipalities, including Western Nippesing. The letter had a brief outline of those powers as well as links and also referenced for contact within the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That letter was sent to myself, our CAO and our colleague simultaneously, I believe. Since then, Madame Ducharme has done some research and compiled a report which is included in your agenda package that outlines, you know, what it all means. And so there is information there. Additionally, we've been at a conference for the last two days, for Monday and Tuesday. And while there, I did have an opportunity to speak with Kathy Horgan, who is now the acting director of local government in our central office, as well as an assistant deputy minister. And they are indicating informally at this point that there will be outreach done by the ministry in the form of some training and information sessions for members of council and municipal staff. That gives more information on what this is all about. So it was quite a surprise. I don't think any of us have expected it. This recent round was not based on population or size municipality as in the past, but by size of council. So any municipalities that had councils of six, no, seven, six members or more, so six-plus mayor or eight-plus mayor were granted the powers. It wasn't based on the size of the municipality by population that that was determined. So with that, I will open the floor up for questions or comments, although we may not have all the answers for you at this point. So. I, Councilor Feday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And through you, if I could ask either of you, or Mrs. Ducharme, I just, thank you. The report was excellent because, you know, it was, before we read your report, it was very vague and it was very difficult to understand what exactly it meant. And I have to say, even though the report was excellent, I still had to read it, I think, three times to get my head around how each section works. So I just want to run this by you to see whether I've understood it correctly. So with regards to budget, the American proposed a budget that then can be amended by a simple majority of council, that the mayor can veto and that the council with two-thirds can override a veto. Is that correct?
I wrote it and I have to look. Yes, yes. The mayor, within five days after the expiry, may pass a resolution to veto the council amendment and then council can override the mayor's veto with two-thirds.
Okay. Bring forward bylaw for consideration. That appears like if the mayor brings forward a bylaw for consideration, that it can be passed with only one-third majority.
Correct.
Okay. And what if there is a disagreement on whether the bylaw brought for consideration could advance a provincial priority? What if there's a difference in interpretation? What happens then?
Those are all questions, that's right, Madam Mayor. Those are all questions that other municipalities have brought up because the definition of advancing provincial initiatives could be, it could be broad and subjective. So I know that other municipalities have asked the same question and I don't know if there's any adjudicative body that would say yes or not, yes or no, this is or isn't. They haven't mentioned it in the legislation anyways.
So would it appear then that for the moment, the mayor's interpretation would be accepted?
That's the way it reads.
Thank you. Other question? Sorry, other questions or comments? Councilor Hart.
Thank you too, Madam Mayor. I was just wondering, I'm not too sure who the question would be for, but and when we received other type of changes from the provincial government, I know we received like support resolutions. And then just doing research, I saw like so many towns had already kind of provided a support resolution or no support, kind of, they're going to send a letter to the provincial government saying, we do not like these powers. Or I was just wondering if we received any or if we will, or do we have to go and receive?
No, through you, Madam Chair, we have received a number of resolutions and copies of letters sent on behalf of municipalities all over the province. I think I have somewhere between 25 and 30 at this point in time that I would obviously, once this conversation is completed, whether or not this council, whatever decision it takes, whether they would want to, by the way, they're all in opposition. There's none in, we haven't received any supporting the initiative. I guess they would need to send a letter for that. But if council would want to support those, I can bring them back at a future meeting.
Yeah, I, just my point there is I'd like to see, like, I know I went out and I read a few and some of those concerns brought forward by those ones who are opposed, there's some pretty valid reasons. And it's just, I'd like to be able to see them all and then like if it's the decision of this council to support that kind of letter that would get sent to the province in opposition of something like this, you know, then it would be our council's right to do so, right? So I'd like to see those kind of, it's just like, like we see it for other things. Like I think there was that bill for planning. We received a lot of opposition letters and then we kind of supported that and we sent a letter of our own. There was also one for intimate partner violence. I had to go find that one. Like we received letters for that where, you know, so I'm just surprised that we haven't received the letters here in this, in this agenda. But it's, it's just for me, it's, you know, it's a weird thing. I see it and I spoke to other municipalities where I see like, we are all elected democratically and I believe we all have that one vote power. So then when I see stuff like that, one-third or two-thirds veto, I'm just personally not for this whatsoever, even though I don't believe you would use it in a malicious way. It's if it's, I believe like that's it's council, we should be providing that letter to the province to say like, I don't think this is right for small municipalities. I think it's leaving a door open for some pretty crazy things if it's in the wrong hands. And I just want to make that one.
Well, I think I need to comment just on the process. So when the legislation, when the announcement came out, many municipalities reacted strongly and voiced their concern. Some didn't. And so there's many that didn't. There, I know of one mayor in Northern Ontario who strongly supports it. I'm not, what I'm saying is that we did not, from a procedural, what you're referencing is typically we would get an association or a municipality that passes a resolution and asks every municipality, you know, and circulates it. That's not how this came about. So what's on the agenda today is the first, the first time that council is having it on the table for discussion to understand it. And if from this committee meeting that there's a proposal to, in a certain way, as you may be suggesting, then certainly we'll put it in the form of a resolution. But normally, as you, what you're referencing is, you know, the municipality of X, you know, wants support for it. That's not what's happening here. We're just bringing it forward for initial discussion here. And the reason it's just a little bit late, first of all, I don't think there's a reason why because the legislation is tabled, so there's no rush to it. The second thing is that the mayor was busy on other important business and I don't think it was fair to. And so we had a discussion saying, no, it's better if you deal with that general government where it should be. And so there was that factor to the general government and having the mayor present, just so that you know process. Thanks.
I'll just speak to that. I think one of the other important parts about the legislation is the transparency piece of it. So in order for any mayor to use any of the powers listed here, it has to be done in writing. It has to be provided to council, to the CAO and to the public. And then it also needs to be posted on our website. So the powers aren't such that I can just go around giving orders and this and that and the other things. So if there were any occasion where they were being used, all of council would be aware. The clerk and the CAO would be aware and the public would be aware. So there is kind of that check and balance as far as it has to be done in a very transparent manner where it's done in writing and it's very clear what is being done and what justification is just so that people don't think that, you know, as of, whatever it was, was it May 1st? As of May 1st, you know, there's all kinds of nefarious things going on in the background, you know, like it's not at this point and we...
What do you mean at this point?
Yeah, exactly. That's not the way, that's not the way it all works. That's not the way, that's not the way it all works. And, uh, you know, I think that, I, you know, in having discussions with, uh, other mayors and as I said, we've been at a conference for the last two days where there are quite a few and it's, it's a hot topic for everybody because it's, uh, it's not anything any of us asked for. Uh, and, uh, it's still, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot to it that's still very unclear. So we're just trying to put the information out in the public sphere for now and figure it out. Uh, other questions or comments? Counsel LeRavie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, also, this meeting that we were in for two days now, if I'm speaking to other mayors, they were saying that, uh, I don't know if they understood it right themselves or, but this is not, uh, this is not a, a vote that council takes, it's the power that the American take on, on her own, like, and also you can have it for two weeks and let's say you, an issue happens, you can, uh, revote it or the next, let's say you say no, but the next mayor comes along, let's say in the next election, they can activate it. So it's not something, it's kind of like a switch, you can on and off from what, what they were explaining. It's, uh, so I don't know if they themselves understood it right, so we're at the beginning of this, which, uh, there's still a lot of questions to be, to be answered.
I, I certainly do hope that sooner rather than later, we do get more information from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, uh, because I think a lot of the questions around it, again, um, it's, it's new to all of us, it's new to the CIO, it's new to the clerk, it's new to me. We don't, we, we probably have a lot of the same questions, uh, that many of the members of council, many of the public, many people in the public would have as well. And, you know, it's, it's complex legislation, so I, I don't know that we have all the answers on it yet.
Yeah.
Counsel LeRavie.
Thank you. I guess the point I'm trying to get to is just the, I, I understand how there's these checks and balances, but they're still, to put it in writing, if you just put it in writing, it's, it's done, right? So to me, it's still, I see this as an undemocratic thing. Uh, you know, it, the council, the way that the council's worked in municipalities across Ontario has worked for decades and then they decide to throw this in, which kind of like, at that point, it's, it's just odd to me when I look at it that way. And I believe the right thing to do would be to provide that letter of support saying that, well, letter, I, it wouldn't be a letter of support, it would be a letter opposing it. And if it stays intact and then you can flip the switch like Counsel LeRavie says, which I find is insane, where somebody can flip the switch and start using it when they want or not when they want, and that, that so be it. But at least we did our due diligence and we provided that letter saying like, let's go back, like, I don't see why we need to have these powers. I don't really understand the reasoning behind the provincial government doing this. And I believe that we should provide that letter.
Counsel Seale.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so to clarify, no matter what, right now, as of May 1st, legislation says the power is there, correct?
She can invoke.
Okay. So, and what Counsel LeRavie is asking is that we, and I would too, and I'm not saying whether I'm for or against or whatnot, but I definitely would like to see some of those letters to see what other municipality have in the minds of opposition. I mean, there is good and there is bad, absolutely. And unfortunately, like, uh, Madam Kirk said, all the only letters that we do get is like so many times, just that stuff, right? You haven't seen the good stuff or whatnot. But that's on us to educate ourselves and find out the good or the bad. But right now, basically, legislation passed May 1st, it's there and, I mean, there's not much that we can do unless we decide that we are not supportive of it. Now, with that said, did I hear correctly, if it would be the next council, if the mayor comes, they can decide to change whatever decision that we, or would Madam Mayor just decide tomorrow that, you know what, yeah, we sent the letter, we're not supportive, but no, now I want to. And I shouldn't say Madam Mayor, but he, Mayor. Sorry, Mr. Bervin, I think you have.
So if council, uh, takes the position that they want to make a comment on legislation, that's, that's often, uh, you know, you can make a comment on the spring bear hunt and, you know, municipalities wrote in opposition of all kinds of legislation. So that's certainly a council right to basically voice your support or opposition or any direction of taking off the list, as some of them are saying. And, you know, again, I think it's the mayor of Cogman who spoke in favor of it. Um, so you could do that, but to your point, uh, if, while the legislation is in existence, there's nothing that a council can do to usurp that, uh, it's called alter hairs outside of your scope. So you, the mayor has those powers. Now, if the mayor, on, on, on a personal note, some have been indicating that I don't want to exercise those powers or blah, 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 then that's certainly, uh, the role of the mayor and her choice and her choice only. So, uh, so the, the comment on the, if this mayor, um, you know, paints, uh, the entire municipality in orange and the other, uh, you know, and she's not reelected or doesn't run and the next mayor, uh, wants to reverse that painted red, uh, then, you know, that's, that's the, you know, the strong mayor powers will, will follow the next election to the, uh, next mayor, uh, if the incumbent isn't reelected. I don't know if that.
Yes, no, and thank you, that's exactly where I was getting at. My point is, legislation's passed, it, it's there, there's not much that we can do except send that letter saying we're not in favor, but it doesn't matter. The power is there, right?
The power is there and all you can do is comment on it as a council.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Counsel Savani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I fully won't reiterate what Counsel LeRavie said, but I agree. It's, it's removing the democratic process of having our vote represent our constituents in the municipality, so, uh, I'll be honest, I don't support it. I think we have bylaws and regulations that are put in place to be followed by administrative staff or CIO, which are actually the people that are really running this town and we're, we're kind of just working to, to help them to make it better, so I'd just like to make that comment. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel LeRavie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think this council's working together and, uh, there's a good relationship and I think this should, this should still be, uh, let's say honored, stay together. And I'm so happy this didn't happen the last term.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Counsel Resto.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, I just want to share, I appreciate the comments that were made around the table. But if I look at how, and going to Counsel LeRavie's last comment, in terms of how we have been working as a council, I don't see those, uh, that necessarily changing. And I, I look at the example of the appointment of the CIO and it is something under these powers where you as mayor could, you know, unilaterally appoint the neck or hire, fire CEOs, but you've, in your leadership, shown that that's not the approach you're taking. You've invited us around the council table to be a part of that, uh, decision-making process and exercise, so, and I don't think, and I think it's important just to reiterate that this, through, um, you know, through what's included in here, isn't, uh, ultimate decision-making on every subject where there aren't votes, there are still structures in place. It's different in some cases in different areas, but, um, like, like I was looking at the, um, sorry, the, um, for the bylaws where we need more than one-third, which is four members of the council, which isn't, it's basically what we do right now, right? Half council, more than a third, we're nine, so half is four. So it's not a lot of difference there anyways, it's not like you can do this all on your own. But I just wanted to reiterate for those at home, uh, we're going to work through this, obviously, it's new, it's new in our lap, but I think that we're, we as a council with the mayor, uh, are doing a lot of the things the right way anyways, regardless of what's in this document here. So I just wanted to share those comments.
Thank you. Um, just if there's any other questions or comments, we'll, we'll wrap it up. You know, to Counsel Resto, thank you for those comments. To Counsel Resto's points, I will say that when I'm speaking with, uh, our colleagues from other municipalities, when I'm speaking with ministers, with ministerial staff, uh, I am always the first to say that I feel like I am the luckiest mayor in all of Ontario because I think that we have, uh, an extremely good council here, uh, that works together, whether we agree on each individual subject or not, differing opinions, uh, do not get in the way, we are all very respectful. Uh, I think we all learn a lot from each other, we have good discussions and good discourse. Um, and that is due to the work that all of us have put in to build that kind of, um, that kind of team atmosphere at the council table. I too feel that these strong mayor powers are undemocratic. Uh, and I think that I have always been a very vocal, uh, supporter of the democratic process, of the fact that I like municipal politics better than any other form of politics because it's not marred by the party process. It really is nine people, um, coming together that find the best solutions. And if I were to start using the, the powers that have been bestowed on me by the provincial government in a way that undermines your authority as counselors, um, it would destroy what we have already spent a lot of energy in building. Um, and I think that, uh, that you all know that that is not my intention, it's not something I want to do, it's not something that we need to do because we have a fantastic council that's working very hard together. Um, so do I have those powers because they've been given to me by the provincial government? Absolutely. Uh, do I have any, uh, immediate intentions to use them? Uh, no, uh, Madam Kirk has compiled some resources, including some templates, and the first, uh, the first act that I will be doing under the strong mayor powers is formally delegating, uh, the selection of the CIO, uh, back to council officially, uh, in writing, uh, through the committee that's been established. Um, and, uh, and we'll go from there, but I, I don't think any of you should expect to see, uh, you know, written orders coming from above anytime soon. I don't think that this particular piece of legislation actually changes anything about the way we operate. So, uh, I just want to know that I appreciate you all around the table, I do agree. I don't think it is democratic. I don't think that if, uh, if, if you have a good council, um, that, that there should be any, any reason to use it at all. And if you don't, then that's probably, uh, an indication of your leadership style. So, um, again, I, you know, it's there, um, but, uh, you know, I, I don't think that we're, we're in a position where you're going to see, uh, like I say, orders coming from above on, uh, on the other things. So, um, in the meantime, um, Madam Kirk will compile those letters and bring them forward at the next meeting, just as, uh, should they be at a meeting or would you like to just share them to council?
That would be, uh, direction is council seeking, uh, to support any of these or you want them for information?
Counsel LeRavie.
I, I'd like to see them as a way of like, if we go that route of providing a letter, I understand the powers will still be in place, but I am a strong believer in what is right is to provide that letter. If nobody provides a letter, then the province is just like, hey, everyone loves it. But if everyone, if 90% of the municipalities provide that letter, at one point, they also have to, uh, listen to their constituents just like we do, right? So if, if we all provide those letters in a way of, right, I respect that, that you're saying that you won't use them in a malicious way, which I believe you would, right? But I believe that us sending that letter is not only caring for us as well, we're caring for all the other small municipalities that may not be as lucky as we are with a good council or a mayor who sees it this way. And I just strongly believe like, you know, we, we are one municipality that do work with other municipalities in other ways and this is the way that we can support them.
So, uh, for, for the next meeting, could we have whatever letters have been sent? Uh, and we can, uh, take a read through those individually and then discuss it at the next council meeting and, uh, uh, see if we would like to send a letter and what, uh, what that letter would contain, because I'm sure that there are different words and different, uh, issues identified with the legislation in different letters. So it'll just give us an idea of what's to be said across the province. It was quite extensive, I believe it was 167, 169 municipalities that received these powers, so I think that puts it up over 200, probably more than half of the municipalities in Ontario at this point, uh, have mayors who, who have had these powers bestowed. With that, any other, Madam Kirk?
Uh, just, uh, do you want them back at the next meeting or at the first meeting, which is general government?
Is it okay to wait for general government to come again? Okay, so general government.
Thank you.
That way you, there'll probably be another 20 in by then. We can, we can have a good collection. Uh, thank you for the good discussion and input. Uh, next item on the agenda, 5.1.2, uh, is a report on municipal tenant, ten, ten, ten.
Tenant.
Tenanted facilities. Um, let's get to the staff report here. So this was an agenda item that, uh, came through Counsel LeRavie and would you like to speak to that?
Yes, yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, this, uh, this came from a, um, a comment that was made a while back by, um, what were we charging for the ambulance facility? And when I caught that, I said, well, maybe it'd be a good idea for this council to know exactly all the tenants that we have and all the deals that are made for each, each tenant. And, uh, so this, this was actually the purpose why I asked this. It's good information for when we move forward to make decisions on it, so we, it's all here. And one, uh, thing that caught my eyes, uh, when I'm reading this is, um, Twigs Coffee Roaster, it says here, there's, it's a, um, it's a lease for five years. If I was not mistaken, I think it's a lease for 10 years that we had agreed upon.
No.
It's a five years?
Yeah, with a renewal option. So the second, the second, uh, renewal option.
Oh, okay, okay, so, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, you know, I think this is interesting, um, information, uh, just to give us an idea of, of the different tenants. We do have the staff comment in regards to any of the operations there that should be here.
Well, through you, um, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor, um, you know, it's interesting as well to, to see the evolution of these, as Counsel LeRavie has indicated. I think, uh, I'd have to point out that, um, they're not all seen in the same way. You know, when we get landlord-tenant, um, situations, uh, some of them would be a triple tenant, such as StatScan upstairs or perhaps the province of Ontario, but other leases that we may have entered into were partnership kind of leases. You raise Ethel Street and if we wouldn't have, uh, stepped forward on that, we would have had some real problems with ambulance service in West Eppising because, uh, the north, or the, you know, West Eppising hospitals, uh, facilities just, um, could not accommodate them anymore. And so some of the things we did was to step up and find the best solution. Uh, the same thing with Twigs, uh, we had this, uh, Marina, uh, complex, uh, and then we had, uh, some business changes from some of our partners, uh, which forced, uh, you know, our director and myself to go around, uh, finding a place to make that a destination point. So, you know, there's, I'm just pointing that out, that a lease is a lease, but i- if you want to treat them standard-wise, they weren't treated standard. The doctor in Burner was, uh, you know, probably in the first year of amalgamation and perhaps even sooner, so, uh, you know, and that was to ensure that there was medical care in Burner, right? So, you know, just pointing it out that on paper, they all look like leases, but they all have a story, uh, in terms of. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. For, um, sorry, Counsel Fadai.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one thing that's jumped at me on here is, um, uh, the lease we have with Statistics Canada. Um, I didn't realize, you know, uh, that it was, I mean, this 64,000 a month, that's almost 800,000 a year.
Yes.
Uh, and just want to point out that, you know, it's a, it's a huge risk for us and I, you know, especially when, a couple of times I've been in the building and saw that the lights were out and there's nobody in their space because a lot of them are now working from home. Um, have we kind of looked at, have we, uh, we've done a risk analysis. Have we kind of looked at, have we done a risk analysis?
Yes, we have, and we've determined that we agree with you. Yeah, of course, you know, so the history of that way back in the day. I mean, that existed before I got here and it was fantastic news and fantastic employment and what have you. Probably a year or two into my tenure, we expanded and built the second part of the building. So the L shape that you see, that didn't exist before. So we added 10,000 square feet because they wanted it and that's all great. So it's in one basket though. Yes, that is an issue. And then, you know, call on COVID and the, you know, the entire commercial or the entire, yeah, commercial leasing business has gotten pretty iffy with employers that, some of them are pretty slow coming back and having their employees come back and work on in situ or on site as opposed to at home. So we are aware, we are in contact with individuals and we do discuss potential contingency plans should, you know, should we receive information. The fact of the matter is, is it's a great space for a lot of people and, you know, and, you know, I can't comment on some of the people that we've spoken to in the past, but there are some pretty good AAA tenants who have expressed interest in parts of it as well. So, but it is a risk to our bottom line. $750,000 is our largest tenant, obviously.
Thank you. If I may, please ask another question. 30 Front Street. What percentage of that building is occupied by economic partners?
I'm going to guess at this. I apologize on the demise premises. I don't have the total amount, but I'm going to guess around 33%. So, you know, if you want to talk leasing, common area CAM charges, are they using part of the, you know, part of the rooms upstairs and that kind of thing? So our leasing isn't as sophisticated as, say, a commercial lease in terms of CAM charges and that kind of thing? But I would suggest that they represent about 33% of that building.
And does it cover our costs to maintain?
I'd say probably not completely, probably now because we don't have as much work that goes into it that we used to when we were fully tenanted. We used to have janitorial and that, where we're probably doing a little bit less or maybe I'm asleep a little bit more.
No, the facility is used less. We used to have art expression, use some space in there as well. It's a community group. We didn't see any revenue from that, but it was still space that was being occupied. They've since left that venue and had, as recent as a year ago, I believe, the Chamber of Commerce rented space from us and they have moved out of that building. So now we just have, and we used to have municipal staff there as well. So the building was fully utilized up to probably close to a year ago. So now the only remaining tenant is economic partners.
So if I can add, Madam Mayor, to be very forthcoming, I don't have it, that it is a building that will be coming before you for discussion on what you wish to do with it as an asset. Whether you see an alternative use for it or consolidation as well to reinvest elsewhere. So it is a building that we are planning on bringing to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Counselor Fettering?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just wondering, I see that Burner canteen is up right there, but other canteens, are they?
Madam Mayor, the Sturgeon canteen is going to, we're going to go through the same process as Burner and we're going to go through a request for proposals. So we had an operator in there, but now we're going to a public process to get somebody to run the canteen at the Sturgeon Arena like we did in Burner last year.
So we don't have a lease then?
Okay, so right now it's an employee?
No, no, it was a, it has been run by an individual.
In transition, Counselor Fettering. So we don't have a lease right now, but we're hoping to have one soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Other questions, comments? So I guess this was really an information piece. There's no further direction to staff at this point, but it is good information about there and thank you very much. I'm going to assume. Okay, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for putting that all together. I thought it was our numbers guru, the Democratic Party, but thank you.
We've been put from Director of Community Services.
Okay, so thank you to all for putting that report together for us. Item 5.1.3, I will move on, is Ward Boundary Analysis. And I will say it's a very good staff report that's been put together by Clerk. It's quite long, so I won't go over it. Would you all like a high-level overview from Mr. Barbour? Are you ready to, would you like to speak to it?
Absolutely not, Madam.
Okay, Mr. Sher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As my report indicated, this is an extremely scoped report based on direction that council had given at prior meeting. It is by no means, the suggestions in this are by no means even scratching the surface of the various combinations and permutations that could be considered. It's done within the scope of maintaining the eight-word structure. However, like I said, outside of that eight-word structure, the options are limitless. That's about all. This one was basically dealt with at a geographic level rather than any other limits or any other parameters and solely, you know, subjectively based on comments and observations over the last four election cycles in doing that. So that's it.
Count, Mr. Barbour?
Yeah, Madam, I think that there might be a little bit of additional information that can be provided just so that the high-level suggestions are on the table. The process by which it is, obviously, council gave the clerk the fact that we don't want to retain a consultant and do a full analysis and just look at tweaking things. And so the tweaks are, you know, the indications and perhaps I don't have, I can probably name Pedley Township in a few, but if you can mention these tweaks so that.
Thank you. So basically, there were minor adjustments to wards and I'll just start at the east end of the municipality with the, one of the ones that Mr. Barbour had indicated. The fact that all of Pedley and Bokeh Township, which is largely part of Sturgeon Falls, is currently with Ward Five, which is Field, because it wraps up and around Crystal Falls. There was a, there's not very many electors and there's not very many properties in that area. It would affect approximately 170 properties. And adjust the levels. I would, the recommendation would be to add them to Ward Four because that's the ward that touches that. Another suggestion was with Ward Six and Ward Seven. Ward Seven has since the beginning of amalgamation been the smallest of the wards and that hasn't changed. And there's a variety of options for increasing that and leveling the playing field with other wards. There are two areas in Ward Six that one could pick from. One would be the area south of the highway on the west end in Kirkpatrick Township. That is one area that could be added to Seven, removed from Six. Also, the Gatto Road, Cache Lake area is currently in Ward Six, could be added to Seven. And there's also an area in Ward Eight, which is south of Rainville Road, which could be added, it's still in Caldwell Township, could be added onto Seven. I wouldn't recommend doing all of these because that would make Seven the biggest and most powerful. But those are three different options for Ward Seven, which wouldn't have a massive impact on the wards that the adjustments would come out of. And that's really the only thoughts because the other issue is in town, that's Ward Two. Ward Two is, as everybody can see, much, much larger than all of the other wards. And that is a result of the amount of development, not just in the town of Cache Bay, but in the southeast corner of town, Dimmer's, Riverfront, Majeure, that whole area that has densified since amalgamation. So that it has created a bit of a lopsided situation with Ward Two. And the option, one of the options that would be for that one would be to simply take King Street. Now the ward kind of jogs, it comes down King Street and then it moves over to Main and then, it was just brought, and I know Ward Boundaries on the. But to switch it over and basically take that section from O'Bri down to, I guess, the Canal Road, the new subdivision, that's a fairly dense area and that would reduce the Ward Two and would increase Ward One to level that out. So attached to the document, there is sort of a visual showing each of the proposed areas and where that area would go. So it's just minor tweaks and moving little sections of each ward around. Other than Wards Three, there was nothing to Ward Three.
Okay. My Counselor, not here?
I just have one question in regards to Ward Three. I don't understand, and I know it was like that, but I have one road which is Stewart and LaVaya and I have the south houses and not the north houses. Wouldn't it be smart to put them all in Ward Three?
And that could be something that we could certainly.
It's not a big tweak.
No, it's not a big tweak.
For me, it would only make sense.
For both sides of the road?
Yeah. I understand downtown because the wards are actually touching each other and there's a big population. But regardless for me, and my coverage area for Ward Three at the moment in Edge, it's a compact area. So it would save the ward from, Field, from having to actually go just on the north side of those, of that road to knock at those doors. So I don't think there's a ton of houses there, but we'd have both sides of the Stewart Road and the LaVaya Road for my ward. It would make sense.
Yeah, and thank you for that because one of the comments that we've had in the past is we had the same situation on Milran Road and on Rainville Road. The south side of Rainville Road votes in Ward Eight, the north side of Rainville Road votes in Ward Seven. And the same thing with Milran, half of it's in Ward Eight, half of it's in Ward Six.
Just because the boundaries run down the roads instead of.
And I certainly don't envy the job that the Transition Board had when they did this. It was a huge undertaking and it was the provincial kind of pushing from the rear saying, do this. So there was a lot of people that had to try and figure this out and it's worked pretty well for the last 25 years anyways. But those were my suggestions. If council was, like I said, there's a million other things that could be done. This is just a small token just to adjust some of those boundaries and level out the numbers in the wards.
Okay, Counselor Fettering?
My colleague, Counselor, we were pretty close. You were first there.
Okay, Counselor Hard.
I just was wondering, Ward One, Ward Two suggests, were those new roads taken into account? Like there's a brand development with very dense housing. Was that, or like, well, I just skew it up again? So should we account for that as we're doing this?
I did. I did account. I didn't add the additional 90 properties that will be coming because I can't, because they're not there yet. But it would add, that piece would be added to, you could decide because it's on the west of, so with King Street being the boundary, that section could stay with Ward Two or that section could go with Ward One. It's, I kind of used King Street, the east-west side of King Street is the boundary and the newer development is on the west side.
Just wondering to help out to Counselors Hayley or anyone in the future. There seems to be a lot of buildings going up there. So, and then we just sold in between Riverside, Riverfront and Dimmer's as well for housing. That would be.
We can insult that, yeah. We're in the process.
I'm just trying to get you going.
Okay, Counselor Fettering?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I have a couple of comments or questions. Ward One and Two, I think that's the biggest imbalance that we really have to correct, I think. Did you consider maybe, I mean, it seems relatively easy to correct that imbalance by maybe just adding to the blue area, the transfer from Ward Two to One. Do you consider expanding that so that we could transfer even more from one to the other?
That is entirely, I was just using sort of the line that was already there. It's entirely within council's purview as to what, just a suggestion.
Okay. And I definitely agree with the options A and B with regards to Six and Seven. And the other idea that I had is sort of, point in that, is there, I understand your point about Ward Eight and I think it is the fact that Ward Eight has, what, 1,900 households. It's a bit misleading because a lot of those, I know that I have a lot of American neighbors on islands that do not have the right to own a case and a lot of these people live elsewhere and perhaps they're not engaged with local politics as much as they would be if they lived here. In terms of reducing Ward Eight, I was looking also at a lot of islands in French River, especially in the northern part, Sandy Island. And I know a lot of people on Sandy Island, for example, would probably have a closer attachment to Ward One or Two as a lot of them will use, you will dock somewhere there. I don't think they're going to dock in Levine. So maybe one, another option would be to reduce Ward Eight by taking some of those islands. And because there's, I think there's already some, in Cache Bay, it's a bit strange because there's a few islands that belong to Ward Two, I think, and some others that seem to be mixed in that belong to Ward Eight, so.
And there's some in Caldwell, too.
Yeah, yeah. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Larrabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm looking at Ward Six and if my friend across the table is in agreement, I'm in agreement with what's proposed here. Get, and. Yeah, it's Mira, yeah. The same concern is agricultural, which Burner is. So it only makes sense that that would be switched over to Ward Seven. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Nichol?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I won't comment on the other ones, but for Ward Five, I also agree that the Pedley-Bokage area is more aligned with Ward Four. So it makes sense for them to join Ward Four. That's my only objection. Actually, also what Counselor Van Nistelrooy, switching the street, makes.
So for that, if that were the case, because all the properties are different depths, we would take it to the rear lot line of the houses on the north side. Would that be, it might make for a bit of a jiggety-joggity boundary because people's lots are different depths, but just to get everybody on the road, both sides in the same place? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Resto.
For you, Madam Mayor, feels like we're playing a real-life version of Risk here. I have the same concerns as Councilor Donnie when it comes to LaVaya because I know being out there and knocking on doors and chatting with folks, having one side of the road, having one, having the other side, the other. And one thing that's kind of even more weird there is the road kind of goes like that. And there was a couple of properties that was on the south side of the road that were in the other ward, so their next-door neighbor Yeah, it's voting for the other, in the other ward. And I know it kind of caused a bit of confusion for myself on the property owners a couple of years ago, but I like that idea because I think their neighborhood's right and it keeps everybody together in their neighborhood instead of voting for two different areas. And that's my vote for Risk.
Who wants Stewart and LaVaya, five or three?
Who wants Stewart, you want Stewart and LaVaya?
Yeah, because my property isn't as big as Ward Five, so if you mind, I'll date it because.
Okay. Anybody else with some comments? Right now, we still want to take this out for a public consultation. These are big changes that affect all residents, of course. But to kind of have an idea, one thing that I kind of have thought about, because, you know, really the biggest inequity is between Ward Two and then Ward Seven, you know, from 1,000 electors to 2,500. And so I really want to try to get the number in Ward Two down to a more reasonable level and Ward Seven up a little bit to a more reasonable level. And I had thought about the boundary in Cache Bay for Ward Two that currently extends to Bodry, I believe. Is that correct, Councilor St. Louis? And whether or not we pull that back to Arkand Road. But Madam Clerk then told me there's really not a lot of households in there that it would make a big difference, like to add from Arkand to Bodry into Seven.
You're probably looking at a dozen homes.
Yeah.
Well, there are properties, but a lot of them are owned by the same two or three individuals, and they can only vote with their primary residents.
Yeah. And the islands in Cache Bay and, say, Bayo Ben, like, I don't, I don't know whether that's worth, that then that would want to go in Ward Two, which we would just be adding to Councilor St. Louis's preference. You know, because they would be more closely aligned with Cache Bay than they would. Again, they're probably launching, they are launching out of Cache Bay. They're not launching out of Levine, but yet they're part of Ward Eight.
The islands that are located within the geographic boundaries of Caldwell and Springer are within the Seven or, so these islands here, they are already in, they, no, they are within, they shouldn't be. Anyway, most of the ones that are in Bertram Township and French River are all with Ward Eight. I'd have to look at those ones because it would, if they are below the concession line, then yes, they would be in Cache Bay.
Okay, they're just the same color as Ward Eight.
The islands are, the islands are tricky.
Yeah. So I don't know, because the only thing I'm concerned about is that these options really don't take a whole lot from Councilor St. Louis. And I think the other thing that we have to think about is when we're doing these changes, it's not just for today, but it's likely the boundaries that are going to live with us for the next 10 to 20 years. I mean, it's been 25 years since it's been done now. And we know that the growth is going to continue at a faster pace within our urban areas. And so, you know, we're still, I understand that the rural areas will always be smaller, you know. So if we have an average over five, six, seven, and eight and they're sitting at about 1,300 or 1,400, that's probably the best that we can get. But I just want us to think about the fact that if growth continues the way it is, you know, in 10 years, we might see each of the wards, One, Two, Three, Four, at 2,500 and the wards Five, Six, Seven, Eight at 1,500. And whether we're okay with that big of a difference between the urban and the rural wards. So it's just kind of a more philosophical.
Shifting that boundary to Roy Street
Yes.
Would, it's very straight line and that would probably change the balance by about another 200.
Sorry, where's Roy?
Roy Street would be the next road to the left. It runs straight from the river down to Canal Road.
Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, what would you recommend as the next steps from here? And like, I think this is a good discussion and the areas of concern that you've identified are.
With the comments that have been made, I would want to bring back a resolution in a future meeting to ratify council's agreement with the changes that are proposed and receive direction to go to public consultation.
Consultation with those recommendations from council. Is everybody comfortable with that process?
And also with, if I may, Madam Mayor, also with maps? To show exactly to the public.
And did you get clear direction in regards to the Ward Six, Ward Seven, Cache Lake and everything like that?
I think that I think that the, what was discussed was the, I think, was Option A, which would be the section of Kirkpatrick Township that is on the south side of the highway would move from Ward Six to Ward Seven. And the other Gotta Road and whatnot would stay with Ward Six and the Rainville Road. Now, with Rainville Road, would, would there be any concern with taking the properties on the south side of Rainville Road and adding them to Seven, just those properties? So that the road is all, yeah, so the road's not split? And same thing for Millar? Because both those roads are divided at Ward Eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then when it goes to Seven?
Yeah.
Okay, and then you'll have new kind of base numbers where everything would?
And just, as indicated in the report, I'm using properties as the, as the item I'm using because it's very difficult because the people in the houses keeps changing, so it's easier to just work with properties.
Is everybody comfortable with that direction, Councilor Revard?
So, I understood it's Roy Street, now like the proposal.
It was just a suggestion.
It kind of made sense. Step on Councilor St. Louis's toes either. It's way over there.
So we use Roy Street?
My wife. Councilor Fenn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I did have one question, I forgot to ask it. I couldn't, I figured, why would there be more addresses than electors?
Lots of properties are vacant.
Or by more than one, like, if one person owns more than one property in the municipality, they still, from their primary address, you only get to vote in two municipal elections if you own in different municipalities or two or more, right? But if you have one property in the same municipality, you only get one vote.
So, like, you had indicated that a lot of your islands would be owned by, they're in there, but they're currently owned by non-resident electors, so you have less people than you do property.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think I got it. Okay, so that will come back for the next general government? Do you want to get on it first with the?
Well, I need to, I'm going to have to see if I can find some copy of mapping, so.
Okay.
I think next general government would be, but we will have to move quickly because these changes have to be into MPAC by January 1st.
Okay. Doug, sorry, Councilor Fenn.
Take a, just so I'm clear. So you're adding the end of Alcat Road, North-South, All-Away Seventeen, and part of Millar or up to Millar?
Both sides, Millar.
All Millar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like work.
And the North-South and, okay, All-Away Seventeen and Rainville on both sides. Okay. I guess I got no choice. The free ride is
If you don't run for council, you won't have to do it.
Current running again. Anybody else?
I will, I will get this all packaged based on these discussions and bring it back.
Okay. And again, and again, we will assure the public that there will be consultations done before these changes are formally adopted by council. And, you know, there may be people out there who have some, some good ideas to add as well. So, you know, we're definitely interested in hearing what residents have to say.
Thank you very much.
Okay, subject over, direction given, and we're on to the next. Thank you. Item 5.1.4, Proposed Amendments to the Procedural Bylaw. And to that, I will pass the floor to Mr. Barbour.
Sure, thank you. I see, I hear it's coming from myself. Through you, Madam Mayor, the only comments I had, so, you know, I saw the agenda request and there were three agenda requests, one for activity reports on activities that we're doing and one on the format of agendas to have a track list and the third, I think, on notices of motion. So, you know, when I was looking at it, obviously, all three are, you know, sound consenting, are great requests and are very public accountability requests, public information requests and good, good suggestions for oversight. I just want to highlight a few key points, though. The procedural bylaws to govern the affairs of council, not necessarily the affairs of staff. And so it could be put there, but my suggestion, as you'll see, is putting it in a different area. The other issues, the agendas are set directions, as I said. There's been a lot of, the other issues is our ability to pull stuff off. To, I mean, in my history, we've amended our governance a few times to try and get the staff to be able to actually work and get things done as opposed to chase councils all of the time. I was remarking, I believe, with the mayor before the meeting on other governance that I'm involved with that, you know, only meet five times a year. Now, obviously, it's not a municipality, but. So some of the adjustments that were made were with that in mind. Individuals, they don't just come here and report to council. They actually deal with a lot of public issues and then deal with very large departments with finances and people and machines and stuff. So, so on the activity report, obviously, a great idea. However, the level and detail of council's role, I'd say, is strategic and not at the policy level. So I'd be careful on, you know, the detail of reports because if you're putting these in agendas, and no offense to any of you, but I can see council meetings going awry and sidestepping with a lot of, hey, I'd like to talk about this, talk about this. And then things, we'd start having meetings lasting until 10:30. And so I'm not 100% sure it should form part of that procedure. I think it should be forming part more of passing a policy with, formalizing and ensuring that activity reports are provided to council on a regular basis with the information that is necessary. As we have financial reports that are, I believe, quarterly, Director of Corporate Services?
With the exception of the first quarter, so it's second, third, fourth quarters.
But, you know, we can put activity reports in the first quarter. You know, my recommendation, that would probably meet in the middle and not have staff worried about what they did for their summer vacation kind of thing and continuously doing that because these things take time. We're not complaining. None of us, though, have admin assistants or policy advisors or anything like that. So these kind of things are done by the people that you see here. So that would be my first recommendation, is a quarterly report as per a policy separate from the procedural bylaw. The second issue is probably along the same lines, I think. I forgot why I wrote this a while back, but adopt a separate policy where summary report is provided to council if items agreed upon to council. Now, that's an excellent idea. We have the capacity to do that. We have software to be able to do that. We had a person who used to do that, but we don't think we ever shared it at council. But we have running tab, you know, running marching orders that we would meet on the morning, we have a morning-after meeting. And we talk about what's, you know, what's happening and where we're at. But I think that if council saw, kept us honest on that. But I think that council could pass a policy with respect to having that as an append, an appendix or an attachment to the, to the information as well.
Not necessarily an item for discussion on the agenda, but appended, so.
And, you know, and I'm trying not to say, well, we'll give it to you in an information package. The way we can do this is that you'll get it with your package as well. So everything is current and that you're actually doing business. Perhaps you do other things other than council, don't know. But some of you may have day jobs. So I know you start focusing on council, so we'll provide you all of that stuff at the same time. And I think that that's fine. And then the notice of motion, obviously, no, no problem from a staff perspective. That would just involve the, so not a major thing, but I just caution you about over-control. Despite the mayor having newly, newly invented superpowers, as a CIO, I am aware of the resources and how we manage them. And then the setting of agendas, which has become a little, you know, is sometimes a source of frustration. I have to set the agendas and the committee agendas based on staff's ability to do it. We could have a senior manager waiting for a manager who had the loss of the family. All of these things, there are human issues that deal with, that affect what we can get on the table. But also, the, as I indicated, certain subject matters, I make an assessment about how, how much time they could take. And I want to ensure, working with council and with staff, that count, or that staff gets as much as they can in front of you and gets the appropriate direction as well in front of you. And, you know, and if we get bogged down on one or two things, we may have some things that we really needed you to talk about and you didn't get to it, such as, you know, Denleville Bridge or, oh, too soon. Anyway, so, you know, there are subject matters that we really need council direction for it because it's outside of our scope of policy. But other than that, that's, that's all the comments I have, Madam Mayor. I give it to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the report on that. I'll just add that, you know, the, on the item of activity reports, it wasn't so much the idea of having staff have to compile some kind of written report for every item, but more being updated just on the status specific. I think especially on capital project or on ongoing maintenance projects, both for us as we get inquiries from the public and then also for the public to know, okay, well, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be starting work on such and such a project and this will impact those property owners. Or the calcium is going to start, we're going to start with our calcium application or the week of June 19th or whatever. It was, it was more of that kind of thing. Or with community services, I know that that team works really hard to make events for the public and kind of having both council and public aware of, you know, what's going on within that department. But again, not like this overly burdensome written report, but more just a, an update, you know.
But through you, Madam Mayor, if I can comment, I think a written report puts a few things, some of the training, puts a few things on the record. It's accountable, is a little bit better. We have to find the format of the report that gives you high-level information. To your point, I don't know that, you know, that we want to get logged down. But I think, you know, that's the issue on the quarterly and I think it should be in writing. And where council could then, at their leisure, contact us, ask for something on the agenda or whatever. With respect to, you know, things that are happening with, you know, with calcium or different things, I understand that we should find a way of informing council. I think we do a bit at communication when we post. We also share with council. But we want to have a format or a list of issues that council should be made aware of so they're not hearing it on this, on the But we want to have a format or a list of issues that council should be made aware of, so they're not hearing it on the street. And so, but, you know, verbal reports, again, Madam Mayor, they can get pretty loose, pretty unprepared if they don't, if they're not required to put it in writing. And secondly, the meetings could spin out of control. And it's, again, you comment on something I can't comment on with respect to strong mayor powers. If I had, let me, a sec, up to, or compliment you, sorry. If I had this council, I wouldn't have a problem. But I don't guarantee that we're going to have this council forever in my experience, and I've had councils that would absolutely blow that kind of thing out of proportion, and I'd be happy to speak to it more firmly, but not necessarily at this time. And it's the same thing with a bunch of things. You're looking at a very well-functioning council. But I haven't seen that council function as well consistently in my tenure.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Yes, Councilor Farrin?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think on the activity reports, it's not just, I see, it's not just informing council, but it's also informing the public. And, you know, I wish I had a dollar every time, for every time someone has asked me, when is Eugene Road going to be paved? And, you know, we know, we have, you know, we've accepted a bid, we know it's going to happen sometime this summer. But, you know, you guys, staff have, you know, discussions with contractors, you have an idea of when it is, maybe. And it's not just Eugene Road, there's a lot of projects, people are wondering, wonder when they're going to do it. And if there was, you know, somewhere people could just look up this information.
So, to your point, Counsel, that's an excellent comment. To your point, in the past, and I'm going to stress out Ms. Henning, but in the past, we put a chronogram or a Gantt chart from a project management perspective, and we laid them out in May, plus or minus, and we had that kind of, you know, the month of June, July. And then we would lay certain things out on a format that you can kind of frame, you know, that you can go on and then you can have. And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to plot, and I don't think it's, because you have to do it for planning purposes anyway, if we can plot that with the understanding that there are caveats on supplier, or supplier contract or availability and so on. We used to have consistency a lot more pre-COVID, with respect to when they say they're going to do a job, they'll do it. And now finding somebody, if somebody, if you want to find a paver right now and you say it's going to be paved in three weeks, I wouldn't be buying a lottery ticket on that. And they can say, you know, I can give you a gesture saying, I don't need you. It's that, you know, it's so, you know, so, or contractor availability and how we have to massage. Dealing with contractors is one thing as well. But I think that we can, as a staff, get together and look at a format for an initial Gantt chart with a big caveat saying, should any changes to this thing happen materially, like three or four days late, no problem, but no, this is going to over now, you know?
Yeah, and to speak to that, we do, the contractor availability and timing is certainly a challenge that we're facing right now. However, we do have in all of our contracts that they're required to give us a minimum of two weeks' notice prior to starting so that we can get the communications out, and then we do put those communications, for example, for Eugene Road and other areas where we have those communications, do go out in advance prior to the work starting, so they don't just show up and start.
So, on your point, though, what I'd like to do is have a staff conversation with it and come up with a format and bring a draft back to council.
And if I may make a second point, please. On the, the action items arising, for me, that's the most important one. Because I think I mentioned this when we last discussed it, but we give direction to staff on a lot of items, and we, we kind of, I feel that we lose track of what we've given direction on and when it's going to happen, when it's going to come back to another meeting for discussion. And, you know, as couns, as counselors, we're also here to set priorities. But at the moment, it's difficult to set priorities, because we don't have a view of when things are going to happen. So, what I would want to see in that report is also kind of like, we expect that this will come back to council or will be done by a certain date. I mean, you might miss that, but at least we'll know when that date has to be pushed back. So, and what, and I totally take your point about, you know, not having this as an agenda item that we can get bogged down on discussing those individual points. But what if we find that we want to set priorities, we see some things on that list that we would want to move up in terms of time and priority, and those that are, may not be agenda requests.
So, to your point, I agree with your point, and I thought, I forgot what I was going to say, but hopefully it gets back by the end of the sentence. Yeah, on those priority things, what I would indicate as well is, and you heard it from our IC in your training, is, and you heard it from the fallout of last term, but I think that I, on the other side, will be not more firm, but more rigid on how the direction is provided. Direction is provided to staff by resolution of council, not by straw poll vote, you can get that. But once we have the legal framework where we're actually directed to do something, and I heard that the IC indicated that, yeah, so do it, this is how you do it. And then you ask, not just when it gets done, but it gets done by when, such as this report, I was asked, when can I get it? It might seem like an easy report, but I do know, you know, our labor relations issues and everything else that we're dealing with, that I know what I have to do for a living, but if I tell you, I'll get you this report by the next, you know, the next general government meeting, no problem, we put that in a resolution, and we basically move forward with that. And that should also form part of your, you know, your keeping tabs, and I don't mean that in a negative way, I mean in a positive way. But you're here, this is where we're at, oops, we didn't get this one, hey, we're ready for that, seems like you missed that. So, I have no problem doing that. And as I indicated, we do have the software to do it. So, but I will be kind of looking at both ways. And you'd say, well, that's, it has been in the past somewhat unclear. You can have a position on what you think was said, and Counselor Larrabee might have understood it differently. And so, we're chasing it, well, that's not what we wanted. And I had, what, an entire term last year on that, or last term on that? So, you know, so the outcome from the fallout of last term was that the consultants and the municipal affairs people were indicating that when you provide that kind of direction, it should also be by resolution. And you are resolved to have the following, and that's your, that's your, that's your power, it's the resolution of council.
Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Farrin?
Just as a follow-up on Counselor Farrin, for the, like, for the big contracts, like, let's say, LaClare Road and Eugene, where it affects a lot of people, in those contracts, is there a, like, it's got to be done no later than?
Yes.
Okay, so at least we could tell people, well, okay, it will, it appears before, but no later than?
Yes.
So, this?
It helps us too, Counselor Farrin, if we have, if we gave you that report in a very simple, clear, succinct manner of what gets done when. Hey, when is, when is calcium being spread? Well, typically, this is when it's being spread, but this year, planning on, and the contract says it's starting, you know, and it's always kind of June or whatever, people want calcium sooner than we can provide it. Because if you do two applications, you're doubling your price, which is 350, 350,000-ish. So, you know, it's not cheap, that stuff. So, we try and mix it into a season, where we get the dry season in the summer, all the weather patterns, and then, you know, and then hopefully it starts to rain and whatever, and then we do our first gradings, and we grade towards the end of August. So, the calcium hardens, and we hope to ride that wave. So, we provide those kind of things. We get, silly as it is, certain people wanting to know when we're sweeping sidewalks, and as soon as they get their first sunny day in March, they think we should be sweeping. I don't know if any, and we all hope for it, because we're tired of winter, but we typically get hit in April. And so, we only start sweeping when we know we don't have to sweep again. So, those kind of things, we can lay out, the big operational questions, and this is when it's being done. And that would be great, yeah.
Hey, Counselor Larrabee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, now, I'm hearing what's planned for the year, that people want to know. But we used to have a reference book that would tell us a 10-year plan for the roads, which road was going to be doing what year, and, you know. So, that would really be helpful when I talked to the public, they said, well, when is my road going to be done? Open the book and say, okay, your road is planned for a certain year.
Yeah, it was a five-year, and it was the, it was the engineering report. It was good, and we followed it, which was really good in terms of, you know, capital with the money available. But what it was also challenged, as you'll recall, Counselor ATA and so forth, was that there was a lot of engineering, but not practical. So, we would find out that the road to the ski, cross-country ski was high on the list, yet no one used it. And then we would get complaints for, I don't know, let's say, Bear Lake Road, and it's like highly used, and, you know, but it's two years down. So, we had to put a little bit of practical in those, in those books too. But that's a separate conversation that I'll be prepared to have with the staff and to relay out the plans based on funding available. So, you know, you know, we're facing funding crunches now, we really are, which is a separate thing. So, we can lay out our best-laid plans, but they would be plus or minus 30% right now.
Other questions, partners? Thank you, Counselor Larrabee. Good, so, at this point, I guess we could have, the first two items don't require any update on the procedural bylaw.
No, it would be just, you would have a resolution to support this. I would have a resolution at the next meeting to let staff create a draft policy to meet your needs on that, taking the comments that were shared today.
And the notice of motion would just be a simple update on the procedural bylaw? I have one question in regards to when you talk about council directing by resolution. So, oftentimes, we'll discuss something in committee at the whole, and then we do have to wait two weeks for it to come back. Is there a way to develop the procedural bylaw where we can table a resolution coming straight out of committee at the same meeting?
That's council's wish.
What are the challenges for that?
Big penmanship. Sorry, but, yeah, you know, I've been in Rayside Valley for, you know, in the late 90s, and then the mayor would say, oh, yeah. And then they say, okay, I want this resolution, and I was deputy clerk, I was 14 years old. And then I'd have to write with my penmanship and whatever, and then get a move on to secondary, and then they'd pass it. So, we can do that if you want to shorten the, if there's no rush, I'd suggest that we can wait. If there's a, you know, more of a rush and you want action now, then obviously, you right now could say, Madam Clerk, I'd like a resolution directing us to do the following, and you would write it up.
Would that, that would go in committee at the whole, or would that, would it come out of committee and then go under new business? Like, I'm just wondering how that process would happen if we wanted to?
I'd have to look into having, how we would do that, and whether it's an amendment to the procedural bylaw. So, we maybe provide some recommendations going forward. But I sense the mayor's concern, because you could, basically, it's May 6th, and then we can say, okay, we'll wait until whatever, and then lose two weeks to another two weeks or whatever, right? So, I think they want a little bit more, hey, we're excited now about this, this topic, how can we get it done? My concern is not mutually exclusive from yours. My concern is that good paper makes good partners.
Yeah, so, I, so I don't know what to do with that suggestion.
We're going to have a conversation, we're going to take this and have a conversation as to how it can happen and go from, go from there, if we can add things on the fly. But I would ask your indulgence, Madam Mayor and council, that, to, that, you know, follow our system of the next two weeks, we firm it. And that's normal course of practice in municipalities, by the way. You basically, it doesn't happen to be split, it happens where at committee meetings, they're brought to the next meeting for ratification. And that happens, you know, in a lot of other areas, and that's proper procedure. But if there is a rush where we need it done now, we're not going to go, yeah, no, wait two weeks. So, it's finding that fine line. Well, we'll come back with a suggestion.
Handwriting resolutions under the cameras is very stressful.
Oh, I can, I make them up, I just, it was all that.
Uh, Counselor Reardon?
Hey, just listening to that, like, if you kind of have an idea that something will be pushed quicker, you just write the decision or keep it aside, and then whip it out if you decide, and you don't have to handwrite it. Like, I'm trying to think, like, something that you know the odds are that we're just going to speed it forward.
Through you, Madam Mayor, in my experience, I've stopped guessing for council.
No, I know that councils can be a little unpredictable. I don't know that God really ever knows exactly what we're going to do. So, we're okay with that?
Yeah, we'll bring some things forward next week.
Okay, we are a little late on our recess today, and my watch died, so it is now 8:15, and I would take a burn a second or three. Wow, the hands went up fast, a lot of them, Counselor Reardon, Counselor Gagné, for a 10-minute recess.
It is moved by Counselor Reardon and seconded by Counselor Gagné at 8:15 PM. Council, a motion was tabled for a 10-minute break.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Carrie, thank you. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Thank you for indulging us in a short break. We are still in committee at the whole, moving to five point three, our Sewer and Water Committee, uh, for which I will pass the floor to our Chair, Councilor Connering.
Oh, okay. I forgot. Yes, I guess I'll pass it out to uh this, Eddie.
So I'm pleased to say that the RV uh and water filling and dumping station is underway and we are expected to have that up and running for the May long weekend. Um, what we do need council's direction on though is what we will be charging for the water filling station. Uh, I did a bit of research looking at um what different municipalities are charging for similar systems. We're a little bit different because we don't have metered water here. So like in North Bay, their system is on metered water. So they're charging um a minimum of thirty dollars and then per liter after that, whereas our system will be, like, it's going to be a tap on, the valve opens and you will have water for a set amount of time. So we will have it open. We're proposing to dispense two hundred liters, which will fill most trailers. Um, and then if they wanted additional water, they'd have to tap again and pay another twenty dollars. And it wouldn't matter if you were, you, basically the twenty dollars would be that that minimum charge. So I'll open it if council has questions or wants to discuss this.
Okay, Councilor Ravi?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So uh, in essence, for a trailer, twenty dollars, it's about, you know, to fill it up, it's about fifty gallons, which is is, you know, proper. But if I go there with a five-gallon container, I would have to pay twenty dollars to have that filled. Like those blue containers.
Yep.
Wow.
That would be that minimum charge, which is the same as what you would be if you were in North Bay with their filling station.
So you would put twenty dollars in there, you would get twenty dollars worth of water and as soon as, let's say, your five gallon is full, the rest would run on the ground or?
No, no, it would be a valve that you can, a hose that you could turn on and off. So it wouldn't just, the water wouldn't flow onto the ground, but.
All right, thank you.
Great. The questions? Councilor Connering?
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, um, just touching on Councilor Ravi's point. And I also kind of, when I saw that there was a minimum charge, uh, my thoughts immediately went uh to um, some of my neighbors on islands who don't have wells in real, in particular. Uh, one neighbor who's eighty-seven years old and spends her summer alone on her island. Um, she used to be able to come and get some water on Course Hall Road. Now, you know, she can't anymore, uh, but was expecting to be able to get some water um at relatively low cost um from the new filling station. So we're saying now that if we're going to impose a twenty-dollar minimum charge, um, all these people, we're going to send them to uh New Frills or Metro to buy uh water that's been trucked from halfway across the province. That's my uh reservation with this.
Yeah, of course, for instances like that, they're, you're right, that twenty-dollar charge. But we're also, we need to also look at the fact that right now we've got contractors coming in and filling. We've got people filling trailers and that is being paid for in the people in the municipality who are paying into water and sewer are subsidizing that for the people who are not paying water sewer.
Mr. Brokaw?
Yeah, I I I think, uh, two things, the location. One is that the location where where it was on Course Hall was problematic. That was discussed at a, either at this council or previous council. And the 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 issue kind of almost stemmed on a microcosm as well from Werner, where there was some serious pushback and with respect to farmers going to fill very big totes on a system. And, uh, you know, and so the majority, uh, the users are are heavy users using it. And it's unfortunate for the few, um, we could explore other methods, but at this point for the trailer, uh, you know, it was set for to to assist, uh, and that was very clear in past councils. It it the the service there was to assist the RV and to be uh tourism friendly. And so we were trying to find a solution to be tourism friendly. And we were also trying to find a solution to stop the abusers. And there were many. Uh, we have commercial uh people who would be coming in after hours and doing all kinds of and and filling up five thousand gallons of, you know, treated water paid for by. Uh, it is kind of a, like a commune or a co-op, really. It isn't ours. It's basically the payers of the system that are in there. And so, you know, we are basically using water that's paid for by the residents of Main Street and Nipissing and Cash Bay and that. They're all paying a a sewer and water charge and are subsidizing then others. And so this is the general, like, we thought fairly fair uh fee to handle this. And of course, maybe, you know, if it needs an evolution of a system for smaller users, we can look at that. But that wasn't really part of what we were directed to do either.
Yeah, and I think eventually when we do go to water metering, or if we do go to, well, not when, if we do go to water metering, then that's something that we can more easily look at at that time. Because once we are, if we are on a metered system, you can easily track this, right? Whereas right now, because we're not, it's just harder thing to have in place.
And we haven't turned away, I'm not suggesting in a public name, maybe I shouldn't say this. Uh, but there have been people that we understand need to fill a few little totes and they've come to the fire station and, you know, so occasionally that happens. So uh, we're not trying to over-police things. We're trying to rectify a problem that uh exists and I think this is the best.
Okay, well, if there's, sorry, just just to comment on what you said. If there is a solution for someone who needs a five gallon of of water to drink at home because they don't have fresh water, if there is a solution like this, then I'm I'm fine. I I wasn't aware that you.
We certainly could look at things on a case-by-case basis, but, you know.
Is it manned? The, will the filling station be manned during the day? Is there an employee there?
No, it's set for a set amount.
Okay, so there's nobody there, it's it's a machine that dispenses water.
Right, yeah, otherwise we'd have to charge a lot more.
Yeah.
I guess there's not an option within that system as a pay-by-meter.
No, not within the system.
Any other questions? Sorry.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. I just think, uh, I I like the approach. I like that it's a better location, it's a better system. Uh, it's still providing service to either local people or or in the tourism industry. And I think it's important to keep in mind as well that um, it seems fairly fairly reasonable for twenty dollars a shot. And, you know, we're always under scrutiny about the cost within the municipality and we have an opportunity here to get a little bit of cost recovery, get a little bit of revenue generation here uh that'll offset some of our other costs within the municipality. I'm sure, once we've gotten through the uh, you know, the cost recovery for this system being set up and and it's evolutionary and maybe for those people who usually came in with one tote, I don't know, because I don't do that, but maybe they can come in with two or three and it'll save them time coming into town a number of times and they can get their most value for filling up when they go uh for those. But I think it's new and like was mentioned, we're going to review this after we've had a chance to get some data and see how things work. Um, but it's a step forward in terms of what we wanted to see as a uh council here for the municipality. And it's a step, something that can be reviewed in the future as well.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, yeah, Councilor involved?
Thank you too, Mr. John. Just wondering, so there's still going to be a non-potable hose for the sewer dumping station, correct? Because, or are we going to have to charge people twenty dollars just to rinse? Because usually you always have that at a park or whatnot to rinse your.
And the intention is you would fill your tank and then rinse with your own hose? Because if we have a a second hose there with non-potable water, then you risk contamination.
Because right now, I guess there's a non-potable.
We had actually.
Removed one.
Moved that, yes.
I guess like provincial parks and such, they have both.
Yes. So.
Humidness and smell.
Yeah, it it is a challenge, but when you put that second hose there, then you also risk that contamination and, yeah.
Councilor Ravi?
Thank you. So there's going to be one hose there for filling up the trailer?
Yes.
That hose will not reach?
No.
And, um, well, I'm, this was designed for trailers and this is what we have to look at. And this is perfect. This is perfect for what I, I'm in favor of this.
Any other questions? Yeah, Madam Mayor?
Um, I'd just like to ask a question in regards to um, when, so right now Course Hall is open, like Course Hall has water right now?
It's, it hasn't been turned on.
It hasn't been turned on and it will not be turned on this year? Okay, and um, will there be some kind of communication poster map at the Course Hall location that directs uh people uh to the new location? Because I'm sure we'll have uh some repeat customers and and people who are used to going to Course Hall. So is that part of the implementation plan?
Um, yes, that's something that we can.
Right, we had a communication plan, but that's an excellent suggestion. I don't know if that was encompassed or recorded. Certainly.
Yeah, it should be right at at the location there. Um, I think this is excellent. It, I believe it was discussed at the, during the last term of council and uh, we brought it up. And then it's it's kind of exciting because um we won't have people rinsing their poop right next to our brand-new ball fields. And so it's a kind of works with the, with the modernization of uh of Goulard Park that that this will be moved to a more suitable location. I think that's excellent. Oh, and Mr. Jerry, I'd like to apologize for trying to cherry the portion of the meeting I got through.
No, thank you.
So I I will, I will apologize. I did, uh, I, I was, I was out of line. I didn't give the gap. So, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions?
Okay, I just have one, one question, just so I'm clear. The, for the twenty dollars, it's going to be uh two hundred liters? And this is going to come on for the liter or it's gonna?
It's.
And then out of time?
It's a matter of time, so it's going to be approximately two hundred liters. So we're going to program it so that we'll know how much it is to fill, how long it takes to fill two hundred liters and we'll program it to come on for that amount of time. to fill two hundred liters, and we'll program it to come on for that amount of time.
Okay, like it's going to be like at the car wash, if you use it or not, it's, if you close your valve, the time's going to be running and-
Yes, and then the internal valve will close when the time's up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
For paying, is it, is it a card or money?
No, it'll be a tap-to-pay system.
A what?
Like a tap-to-pay, like, so your credit card-
Okay, so it's going to be a card?
It'll just be a straight, yeah, we use tap, we'll tap for twenty dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, back to Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Counselor Pedari. That will wrap up Committee of the Whole, we'll move into the items on our regular meetings.
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Restool. Be it resolved that the consent agenda for the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting held on May the sixth, 2025 be approved as presented.
Questions or comments? Counselor Pedari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, could we pull the six-point-one-point-one up?
Absolutely. Resolution?
Nope. Which one is that?
That's the, the Committee of the Whole one. Okay, so six-point-one-point-one will be dealt separately right after this item, so what we have on the table is the consent agenda with the two remaining items, so six-point-one-point-two, six-point-one-point-three. Other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so the meeting for the six-point-one? Okay, so, any other questions or comments?
So it is, it's moved by Counsel Restool and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. Be it resolved that the minutes of the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting held on April the fifteenth, 2025 be adopted as presented.
Okay.
Okay.
Counsel Pedari?
So la page quarante-six, item de la, it was curieux savoir le mot.
Quarante-six?
Quarante-six.
Okay, I don't have the, I can't even, yes, okay.
Ça va que c'est que le mot endorse, vous dire, nous autres pour la municipalité, c'est pourquoi qu'on, juste curieux.
May I?
Oh, oui.
I believe there was a letter requesting support from the municipality, from the organizers, in order to support funding applications that they were making, in regards to the event, we're talking about River and Scott.
Okay, yeah.
And so, it, the, I believe the item on the agenda was a request for a letter of support from the organizers, from the municipality, that they could submit with funding applications. So that's what it meant by endorsement, that we recognize it as an important event within our community.
That was my understanding.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
So, ça ne me pour, ni ce type de, whatsoever, okay. Okay, I was just curious.
Okay, now see, okay, any other questions or comments on the agenda from the previous meeting? Okay, resolutions on the table, all in favor, please? That's Kerry, thank you. Okay, we have no items under planning correspondence or unfinished business, on to new business.
It is moved by Counsel Fera and seconded by Counsel St. Louis. Whereas at the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting held on April the fifteenth, 2025, deliberations were held to discuss the expenditure estimates for solid waste management for the year 2025, and whereas council approves the projected solid waste management expenditures for 2025, be it resolved that council for the corporation, the municipality approves the general municipal expenditure estimates for solid waste attached to Schedule A for the year 2025.
Questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? Kerry, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel St. Louis and seconded by Counsel Fera. Be it resolved that bylaw number 202541 being a bylaw to set the rates for solid waste management system in the municipality of West Nipissing for the year 2025 shall come into force and take effect on the date it is passed.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? That's Kerry, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Nichol and seconded by Counsel Rivard. Whereas at the April fifteenth, 2025, Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting, council discussed a proposal to expand the curbside pickup of solid waste to River Valley and Kipling. Be it resolved that council hereby approves the expansion of services to provide for curbside pickup of solid waste to the areas of River Valley and Kipling.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Oh, I've got a question, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Did we, I had a question about, will the hours of our municipal dumps stay as the same as it is now?
Yep.
With, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, resolutions on the floor, all in favor? That's Kerry, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Rivard and seconded by Counsel Nichol. Be it resolved that public works equipment described as a 2012 Case Wheel Loader Model Number Six Twenty-One, serial number NBF211512, be declared surplus for the West Nipissing Municipality, and that council authorizes the sale of the aforementioned surplus equipment or transfer to West Nipissing Environmental Services.
Okay, there is, I'm sorry, there is no, there's no piece of paper in the agenda package on this item at all? There's not, there's not a resolution even in the agenda package that's here.
Oh, it's in the online now, yeah.
This is the one that was sent by Holly this afternoon, I like, I have the one.
Yeah, me either.
I, I don't, I just don't see it in the package, so it's not here, so we don't have anything, so it's being transferred from the municipality to West Nipissing Environmental Services?
Yep.
Is there any money being exchanged?
We, yeah, we will assign a market value to it, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm just wondering, is it the online version or the one that was emailed?
This is the one that was emailed by Holly this afternoon.
Okay, I-
With the addendum, it was the merged, the new merged, so I don't know, I just-
I just got omitted, but it was in the original.
Yeah.
I'll look into it, certainly.
Okay, it's just a-
My emergency, sorry.
We can go through the resolution. Is counsel comfortable, like even the-
Go to emergency or environmental services?
It's going to environmental services?
There's a type-
Yes, environmental services.
Yeah.
Okay, because on my, it says emergency services.
So that needs to be amended.
Is that just on the agenda page?
Yeah, so can we get just a motion to amend on the, the change of wording from the presidency services to environmental?
It's correct in the resolution.
What's not the same, environmental services?
It's correct in the resolution. Well, my version of the resolution is correct.
I only have an authorization to declare surplus, I don't have a-
Yeah, the resolution says to transfer the equipment to the West Nipissing Environmental Services.
Is this, is this an item that needs to happen today?
No.
Okay, so can we just fix everything and bring the resolution back at the next meeting so that the paperwork's on the order? So if I could get a motion to defer to the next meeting, that would be, okay, Counsel Restool, Counsel Fera? It's just, just so it's clean. Okay, yeah.
Differrals on the floor to-
Differrals on the floor, questions or comments on the deferral? All in favor of deferring this motion to the next meeting? Uh, that's, thank you. Okay, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Nichol and seconded by Counsel Rivard. Be it resolved that council authorizes the execution of the agreement with Spectrum Telecom Group for the Fire Hall Tower upgrade in North Minnetville, municipality.
Any questions or comments, Counsel Fera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, I have four questions, a list of questions that are already submitted to Mr. Barbo, so I'm just going to rattle them all off. Is there an existing tower, an agreement with Spectrum at this location? And is the proposed tower meant to replace an existing one? If so, what are the terms of the existing agreement? And what is, what is the approximate value of the services that are provided to us in terms of compensation? Spectrum or any other telecoms providers have any other towers in the municipality? I believe Levine, maybe? And what are the terms of compensation for those?
Thank you, and I diligently forwarded it to the person responsible for agreements, so I'll pass it to the-
Yes, no, maybe, and we don't know, I teased it. The, the current, the tower that is at the North Minnetville is owned by, we assume it's legacy, they are proposing to replace a structure that is owned by the municipality. So the one that's there, we own, it'll be replaced by them, so there's no current agreement for North Minnetville. Second question was, yes, we do have other tower, municipality agreements with Spectrum for infrastructure on other, other of our infrastructure. Unfortunately, I didn't have time to pull out all the leases and get all the terms for all of those, but there's one in Levine, Sturgeon Falls, Werner, and maybe Cash Bay, checking on that one, it might be expired. We can get the details, most of them are the same, and most of them call, there's an in-kind, same as in this one, sort of compensation for provision of services. But like I said, I didn't compile everything, but they all seem to be fairly consistent that they provide internet services in exchange for the space.
Um, so, had, did they, the previous tower, the tower they want to remove in North Minnetville, you say was owned by them?
No, is owned, is owned by us.
The one that was there is owned by us, the new one's going to be owned by them? Okay, and, um, do, so we, were we benefiting from free internet connections already?
In North Minnetville?
Yeah.
We had no arrangements in North Minnetville.
Um, and do, do we take, do we offer this at a lower price to encourage, for example, rural internet access by, you know, let's say, would we take a different view if it was Rogers who wanted to put up a cell tower? Or Spectrum Internet, who's a local company who wants to provide, you know, they've been providing internet on, like, Nipissing and possibly other places, but I remember, you know, getting my first internet connection in 2007, which is almost twenty years ago. So, do we do, do we have, do we take a view and encourage those by, because I found that, you know, four internet connections is not a lot in a way to, you know, to allow someone to put a telecoms tower in there.
I'll defer to Mr. Barbo.
Well, if I understand your question, it's a historical thing, and I do apologize, we got sidetracked a bit, so we couldn't get the details of the term, but typically we do see this as an economic development type of initiative, where obviously the issues of connectivity in remote areas, you know, they approach us, various customer, or various companies have approached us, and we're involved with one, with River Valley and Kipling Road East, I believe as well, the tower went up, was that Spectrum? Or somebody else? So where we see the ability to enhance, we actually, the first one that we provided was on our water, or was that on our water tower? Yeah, on our water tower, and we provided some assistance there, so wherever we can. But your point is well taken, well, a few things I would see where this was approached, the fire chief was approached with this, and I don't know what the state of connectivity is in the remote areas anymore, whether it's still the need to be, you know, providing enhanced service or not. I know where I used to have my audity, it was True Eight O Two was the strong local provider there, and Spectrum was not there, or had a very small presence because of, I think they installed a tower, just at Warner, the cannabis shop, so, but, so, yeah, we've been supporting them where we can to enhance connectivity to our residents. Have we taken it to an RFP or not? We haven't been proactive, we've been reactive to a companies approaching us.
Thank you.
We've never been approached by any of the other, they go usually on private land.
Okay.
Does you have a question as well, Counsel Pedari?
Yeah, is the service for internet access or radio access for the fire station?
High-speed internet.
Just high-speed internet? Good, and you answered my other question, I wanted to know, we went off the tender to see if there's any appetite by other companies, but-
We didn't.
That's okay, yeah, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, there is a resolution on the floor, so all in favor? That's Kerry, thank you. Questions?
Yes, it is moved by Counsel Rivard and seconded by Counsel Nichol. Be it resolved that the Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting for June the seventeenth be held in Werner.
Has a, has a location been established?
Once council adopts this, we'll set it up with the community.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Counsel Larabee?
Will this rebroadcast on the internet like YouTube, like?
We don't know yet until this, and then we'll have to approach the community. We have had difficulty, and so I would not want to raise hopes with having our technology. We can record oftentimes and then post later, but I don't know what their, what their capabilities are in order to stream.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions on the floor, all those in favor? That's Kerry, thank you.
It is moved by Counsel Nichol and seconded by Counsel Rivard. Whereas requests for quotations were sought through a half-ton four-by-four pickup truck, and whereas three quotations were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendation received, be it resolved that the quotation for the half-ton four-by-four pickup be awarded to Tremblay Chevols, Tremblay Chevrolet Buick GMC in the amount of fifty-six thousand seven-hundred-two dollars and fifty cents, being the lowest quotation meeting specifications.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? That's Kerry.
It is moved by Counsel Rivard and seconded by Counsel Nichol. Whereas the Dzorme drain was authorized by bylaw number two thousand and three twenty-two, and whereas a notice of request for a drain minor improvement under section seventy-five of the Drainage Act was received from Leonard Belanger, registered owner of the property described as blocks thirty-nine to forty-four, Plan Thirty-Five in the township of Springer, and whereas the request for the drainage improvement is required for the purpose of providing access for the landowner, and whereas the requested improvement is minor improvement within the meaning of section seventy-eight-five of the act, be it resolved that council for the West Nipissing Municipality hereby agrees to proceed with the proposed drainage improvements to the Dzorme drain pursuant to section eighty-five, seventy-eight-five of the Drainage Act, and be it further resolved that Case Mart Associates Limited be appointed to make an examination of the area, and if required, prepare and file a report with the municipality for the requested improvement.
Okay, questions or comments? Counsel Pedari?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So it's an existing municipal drain?
That's correct.
Is it normal practice for them to, two years for any minor?
To be my answer, this is new legislation that the, that was adopted, I think, two years ago. Before that, you would have to petition for a new report. The act was amended to allow landlords to petition for minor improvements, and they are responsible for the entire cost, the drain is not charged for the, for the work person, the whole assessment.
Okay, so under normal practice, let's say there's work to be done, a drain, it doesn't come here.
Oh, maintenance? No.
That's, that's my point, maybe it should, probably another discussion, because I've got a couple drains going on there, and people are upset that they didn't know about the work, and they've got bills there up to ten thousand bucks. So, it's maybe not a discussion there for tonight, but if we're getting something like this here, I think any work on drains should, should come here and should, everybody should know. everybody should know about it, all the neighbors and.
There's no requirement on the, under the act to bring maintenance to council, but if council wants to, uh, report from time to time on drain maintenance initiatives, I can.
So under the act, this form.
This is construction. Any, any drain construction will come to council, um, not maintenance.
Having said that, I, I, so you, Madam Mayor, I think it also, I'm not sure that this council has had a bit of a drainage one-on-one. Obviously, you're one of the worst with it, uh, and then the legislation has changed somewhat, but I think you raised some good points, and I think we should put, uh, an item on the agenda and upcoming agendas to provide an overview of municipal drains, what the legislation is, how it typically, uh, how it typically runs, your point with respect to, uh, notification. Obviously, there's notification of, you know, to the assessed owners, though, of, of maintenance going to be occurring.
I believe there, there usually is, I believe there might have been one project that might have slipped through the cracks.
Okay, but you, you raise, uh, an interesting, or a, a point on notification as well, so I think that we should be bringing this up, so everybody's on the same page on how Drainage Act one-on-one, uh, just for the, you know, the benefit of, uh, council, we're involved enough as a municipality, but when the municipality became West Nipissing, uh, it's an agricultural area, and there were many municipal drains already in existence, but the majority of our work in the first part of the municipality was drain construction, because the unincorporated townships did not benefit from the Municipal Drainage Act, and so then there was a lot of work, and now our, our focus has shifted away from construction, which past councils mostly dealt with construction and approving consideration and all of that, all of that stuff, now it's maintenance mostly, and so I think we should provide a little overview to council on, on that.
Would that fall under planning and, uh?
It's.
Yeah.
Really?
It's me.
Okay, and would that satisfy, uh, satisfy your question if it came back to council for general information on drains? And then we can just deal with this specific application right now? Okay, uh, thank you for bringing that up, I think it'll be useful for all of council. So there is a resolution on the floor, uh, on six point five point eight. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor? That's Carrie, thank you.
It is moved by Council Nickel and seconded by Council Rebar. Whereas requests for quotations were sought for the, oh, this is the.
Yes, this is.
Um, request for quotations were sought for the rehabilitation of John Street from Nipissing to Clark Street, where seven quotations were received, and whereas council concurs with the recommendations received, be it resolved, it's actually the tender for the rehabilitation of John Street from Nipissing to Clark Street be awarded to Ed Segal's paving and trucking and paving, being the lowest, lowest tender meeting all specifications.
Any questions or comments? Council Restool?
I had a question through Madam Mayor, maybe to whichever staff. I know we did some excellent work last year from Corral to Clark, assuming this is a continuation going west, and are we looking at something similar in terms of how the curbing and all that kind of stuff is gonna look?
Yes.
For this section? And last one, we're doing underground as well, it's not just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, all of that, and just to point out with this, it is a two-year contract, so the entire section won't be done this year, we'll do Nipissing to Nisho in the first year, and then Nisho to Clark in the second year.
Thank you.
No, it's a, it's a, uh, no, so, uh, just to point out to you too, it's a very large contract, I, I will point out to you though, that we had a conversation with respect to financing and, and funding for it, we do have some funding, uh, so this is tied to some funding, it's tied to some capital, uh, investment that, uh, that is the above ground, uh, but there will be challenges in the sewer and water that, uh, Ms. Craddock and myself and, uh, Ms. Hanning are looking at finding, uh, some adjustments as to how, uh, we can fund it, because it looks like we may have a, about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand pro, dollar problem this year, so we're gonna look at ways, uh, as to how we can basically find that adjustment, so I just wanna put that on the record. It needs to get done, however, uh, we do have pressures under sewer and water that we, we need to rectify, uh, and we will be bringing, uh, that plus, as I indicated, at budget time, um, financing methods to get more on the table, uh, with some of the projects that you want it to get done, uh, so there's that, plus the fact that we have to get done, so we'll be coming at you, uh, in the short term, probably in the next month, with a funding proposal as to how we plan on packaging some information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have a question to follow from Council Restool. Why are we doing it backwards and not forwards?
Um, it, it has to do with having to start with the, the kind of, the, you work from high to low type of information, so that's, that's why I'm not directly connecting.
I figured there was an answer, I was just, uh, wanted to. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Okay, there's a resolution on the floor, all those in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Um, we are done for the most part, um, I will speak briefly, and I'm sorry for a mayor's report, because we actually have had, uh, a very busy, uh, couple of weeks around here, um, so I guess I will, last Thursday, uh, Mr. Barbo and I participated, uh, in a meeting at the municipality of French River, which was a, a tri-party meeting, uh, between ourselves, uh, the mayor and CIO from the municipality of West Nipissing, and the, uh, Chief Duquette, uh, and his, uh, I guess a CIO, although I don't think.
Band administrator.
Band administrator, uh, in regards to Dokees Road as well as some other, uh, I think, uh, opportunities for collaboration, uh, so I did wanna thank both, uh, Mayor Giselle Pageau, uh, and also Chief Jerry Duquette, uh, for the time, it's a very good meeting, uh, between all of our teams, uh, and, uh, you know, it, it was, uh, it was nice to get together with our friends and neighbors. Then on Saturday, uh, I would like to just extend a congratulations to the Chevalier de Clon, to Sacred Fair Church, for their hundredth anniversary as an organization. Uh, I was fortunate to take part in both the, uh, the mass at Sacred Fair Church, uh, as well as a lovely dinner put on, uh, by the Chevalier in celebration, uh, afterwards. It's a huge milestone for an organization that has, uh, had a lot of impact in this community, and I do wanna recognize that. Sunday, we had a big party at the, uh, Sports Hall of Fame, uh, and, uh, for those who haven't heard yet, uh, celebrated some good news with the announcement of a hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-dollar, uh, grant, uh, from the J's Care Foundation in collaboration with TD Bank for the rehabilitation of, uh, Field One, uh, baseball field at Gulard Park. Uh, this was, uh, an initiative brought forward, uh, earlier in the year or during the budget process, eh, prior to the budget process, budget, uh, by Council Rebar, supported by all of council. Staff did a wonderful job preparing the applications, and, and we were one of only fifteen communities across Canada selected, uh, to be recipients of this grant, so, uh, I'd like to congratulate everybody involved, and we're all very excited, uh, to get started, uh, on that project. Uh, as an update, uh, it was stated in the releases, uh, we will not be moving forward with the work until, uh, the fall to allow the, uh, currently planned baseball seasons to operate without interruption, uh, but in the meantime, I know our staff will be working hard at putting those plans into place to start that work, uh, and have, uh, have those changes done, uh, for the startup next season. For Monday and Tuesday, Council Larrabee, Council Pelleri and I have been in attendance at the FANOM Conference, which is the Federation of Northeastern Ontario Municipalities, which has been taking place in North Bay, uh, it's always a great, uh, opportunity to connect with our colleagues from across northeastern Ontario. Uh, we're back again for a half-day tomorrow, where we will have, I believe, five to six provincial ministers, uh, in attendance, uh, giving, uh, giving their, uh, their words on priorities of our newly-elected provincial government, uh, and then, uh, the fun of, uh, of the bear pit, which is where, uh, the municipalities get to stand up and ask some hard questions, uh, to those ministers, uh, in regards to our priorities, so it's always my favorite part of a conference, it's, uh, and we're looking forward to, uh, to finishing off that event, uh, tomorrow. Uh, tomorrow evening, Club Demetee and Werner is hosting their Mother's Day dinner, and as well, we have the, uh, OPP, uh, here in council chambers tomorrow, offering a seminar for our residents on fraud prevention and scooter safety?
Yep.
Thank you. And that, uh, that should be good, because they're both, uh, both subjects that are always meaningful, and of course, uh, the scooter thing, we've seen, uh, come up in, uh, in, in recent local news, and, uh, they'll be addressing the difference between mobility scooters and electric, uh, mini cars, and, uh, what the different rules of the roads are to make sure that all of our residents are informed of those, as well as, uh, fraud prevention efforts. Uh, so overall, it's been, uh, been a very busy, uh, couple of weeks, and, um, you know, we look forward to, look forward to getting on to the next couple of weeks, which I'm sure will be just as busy, but, uh, thank you very much, that's my report for the evening. Uh, and with that, uh, we do have a closed session, so I will pay a motion from Madam Mayor.
It is moved by Council Gonya and seconded by Council Pelleri. Be it resolved that we proceed into closed meetings authorized in section two thirty-nine-two with municipal law, we discuss the following: personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal or local board employees, and labor relations and employee negotiations regarding a non-union compensation review.
Okay, questions, comments, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Liz.
Good night. Can stop the live stream.